20's and the 30's and the 40's, this was basically the west LA of Los Angeles or the Beverly Hills. Had a lot of actors and actresses and a lot of wealthy people living in and around the park. Everybody kinda came here on weekends to relax. Basically in the 1980's is when we started to see a pretty big decline in the overall quality of life of the park. It was right around when powdered cocaine hit the Hollywood scene and kinda spread down here. Then, right around the mid 80's, we had rock cocaine hit and that's when we saw the neighborhood really start to decline. And basically, the park split up back then into different areas. If you had the south side of the park, you could buy rock cocaine. On the west side of the park, you could buy marijuana or pills. On the east side of the park, you could buy heroin or prescription drugs. And for awhile there, you could go on the internet and you could Google certain drugs on the internet and MacArthur Park would pop up and it would give locations on where to buy that certain type of drug. It's kinda what drove the crime up in this area. Everything seemed to be related to narcotics and gangs. Rampart Division unfortunately is also known for a big gang population. Once we started the gang injunction, we saw a pretty big decrease in gang crime, especially obviously MS-related. After that, we did four other gang injunctions, Temple Street, 18th Street, and a number of others. And in my opinion, I think that attributes to the biggest decrease in crime for Rampart Division at the gang injunctions. We were able to obtain a grant through several different sources and as you can see over here, we're putting artificial turf in. We're calling it the Rampart, uh, the MacArthur Park Meadow. It's not considered a soccer field, being that this is a passive park, not a sports park, but people are gonna be able to play soccer in here. This is the band show that we have straight ahead. Basically June through September, we have concerts five days a week that we hold in the park. And it's put on by the Levitt Pavilion and we're able to bring families that come in, they listen to the concerts and they go on for about two or three hours in the evening times and then they go on about their business. The area is basically broken up into four quadrants. The northeast portion of the park is controlled by a gang called Wanderers. The northwest portion of, the northeast portion of the park is controlled by 18th Street. The southeast portion is controlled by Crazy Riders and the southwest portion is controlled by MS. And it's kinda been like that since as long as I know, the early 90's. I talked about the gangs being able to be in the park and hanging out in the park and controlling the park and that's how it was, you know, back when I got here in the early 2000, late 1990's, but it definitely isn't like that anymore. Basically, we don't allow gang members to hang out in the park and if they are gonna hang out, they certainly don't hang out in pairs because if we see them hanging out together, then they get arrested. The area we're driving through right now is controlled by MS. If you look at the walls over here on the buildings, you can see how they've been painted over and over and over. But basically, MS puts up their name right there and they put an arrow pointing this way and that means that they can control this whole area from there on south. Basically, people think that MS started in El Salvador, when actually it started right here in Rampart Division. And what we did is we arrested them, deported them, and they flourished down in El Salvador. But, you know, back in the 80's, Rampart Division was basically made up of people from Mexican descent and Cuban descent. And the Mexican people didn't get along with the El Salvadorian people and there was a lot of tension. What had happened was the El Salvadorians found themselves that they were being victimized by the Mexican gangs in the area. So what they did is they formed their own group to protect themselves. And as time went on, they kinda developed into their own gang and they called themselves Mara Salvatrucha. And basically Mara is slang for group or gang. Salva for Salvadorian and trucha is a slang term for be careful or beware. So in essence, what it translates to roughly is beware of the Salvadorian gang. The same thing with 18th Street, it started down there on 18th and Arapahoe and they expanded all throughout, basically all throughout the nation and the world now. So we have kinda, two of the most notorious gangs in America, all started right here, basically in the 5.6 square miles that we're driving in today. Is this your car?
Yeah.
Where'd you get it from?
Chicago, Wisconsin, St. Louis.
Sit over there, big guy. Where you from?
An 1173, O'Callaghan, T Unit.
From where? What are you doing over here?
Homeless.
Where's the homeless shelter at?
Malibu.
That's not a homeless shelter, man, that's a, that's an inn.
Nah, it's not a bally.
They don't give you a hard time down here? You don't get hit up with all those tattoos?
Yeah.
You gotta be careful, homie, you're gonna get shot down here.
Well, I ain't trying to get a ticket, I'm just trying to put my hand.
Yeah, but you stand posted up right here in MS neighborhood, they're gonna come check you. Yeah, be careful. The only thing I would like to make clear is that the LAPD, we do not enforce immigration laws. We don't go out and check immigration status. It's not something that we do. We don't wanna discourage people from coming forward and reporting crimes. And I think that's a big rumor within the city of Los Angeles, so it's sensitive, I think, I guess. Basically, Rampart Division, we have nine senior lead officers. And out of the senior lead officer is, we're assigned to a specific area within Rampart. And we are in the liaison between the police department and the community. When the community members call the police and the patrol officer show up, we handle the call short-term because, you know, honestly, officers, they don't have time, how busy we are, to come up with long-term solutions to work long-term problems. It's just too busy, they have too many radio calls that they have to answer. So that's what the job of a senior lead officer is. Where we go out, we meet with community members, we find out what their problems are, what sort of issues are affecting our community, and we develop strategies to help combat those activities, whether it be underhodics problem, or people drinking in public out in front of their house, or prostitution problem, whatever it might be, we're basically the community contact with the police department. We handle a lot of community meetings, we handle a lot of community functions, we do neighborly clean-ups or neighborhood functions, whether it be a carnival or a school function, we go to schools and talk to kids. It was a pretty big transition for me, quite honestly, to go from working a gang unit in Rampart Division to being a senior lead officer. And quite honestly, you know, I spent my career handling radio calls, dealing with gang members or addicts offenders, and then I went to be in this community liaison. And it was a big job, it was, it actually kinda helped me be a better police officer because it made me understand how much support that the LAPD has from the community because working some of the other assignments, you kinda don't realize how much support that we really do have. And going to the community meeting, some of the phone calls that I've received, it was nice to see, you know, how much the community really does like the police. Sometimes you don't see that working a regular patrol site. Constantly just dealing with a lot of negative, a lot of negativity. Right up ahead, we have the old Rampart Police Station. It was built in October of 1966. And we just closed it down July of last year and we moved into our new facility. And the reason for that is this was built for, basically, officers of that time period that had that many officers assigned, which I don't know how many, but we outgrew our police station. There was just too many officers that are assigned to Rampart Division in this facility. We didn't even have detectives over out of here, we had to house them in a separate facility down the street so the officers in patrol weren't able to communicate with the detectives on a daily basis because of them being on an off-site facility. From what I understand, this facility now isn't gonna become the new headquarters for Metropolitan Division. So we're gonna have SWAT, K-9, the mounted unit, and several other entities out of the old Rampart Station, which is good because they don't have a facility yet. You know, when I came on the job, there was a certain number of things that I wanted to accomplish. I always wanted to be a narcotics officer. I did that here at Rampart, I found out I wasn't very good at it because I didn't fit into the community very well. And I always wanted to work Rampart Gang, I wanted to work the crash unit, and I did that for a long time. Now, you know, I'm a senior lead officer for four years, or so, four and a half years. And it is, it's one of the best jobs, in my opinion, on this department. A lot of, a lot of responsibility, but there's also a lot of freedom involved, too. I think it takes a special, a special officer to be able to, be able to do this job. I guess what would be next for me is, I took the sergeant's test this year, I had my oral interview the other day, and just kinda see how we do the economy and what the budget restraints and how many people they promote and where I land on the list, and make a sergeant. I think that's the next step in my career, hopefully. What happened?
They weren't fighting.
Basically, we're driving down MacArthur Park right here, it was like that, they got with us, left them two guys fighting. Basically, we're looking for the cop and the guy already laughing, hoping they're creepy, the guy got a letter of the other person down, he's sending him his head on the concrete, split his head open. He doesn't wanna give his name, he doesn't wanna report taken, like he doesn't want the ambulance to read the music, so we'll probably just write a quick report, write a quick narrative and that'll run by the way. Yeah, basically, we were still trying to, trying to find out if he was actually pushed down or was he so drunk that he might have maybe even fell down. Luckily, we had some Spanish-speaking officers that responded and kinda helped me with translation, they're gonna take over. But basically, he's gonna get transported right across the street from Rampart Station actually to get sent to an hospital. He's gonna get treated, hopefully he'll sober up a little bit and get some air for me, you know, whatever happens. But I guess a lot of the current shit at Rampart Division are alcohol-related, as hot as it's been this summer, or beginning of this summer, I think we're gonna see a lot more of that, unfortunately. Well, I wanted to thank you guys for coming out with me today, I hope I was able to shed a little light on what we do as Rampart officers. I hope you enjoyed the tour of our new facility, I know we're pretty happy with it. And thanks again for being with me today.
For the men and women of the new Rampart Area Police Station, it's all about community outreach and building bridges of understanding. Those are the keys to improving the quality of life in Rampart. I'm Mary Grady, thanks for joining me, and I'll see you next time on another edition of Inside the LAPD. If you've missed any past episodes of Inside the LAPD, or you just want to see your favorite episode again, go to www.lapdonline.org, click on the LAPD TV logo to the LAPD TV page, scroll down, you'll find Inside the LAPD.
Hey, hey buddy! Ew, with the stupid hat! Come here, closer! No parking! Do you know what happens when you park illegally on these narrow hillside streets? You block the streets so emergency vehicles can't pass. Each year, homes are destroyed and lives are lost because of drivers like you who park illegally! And you know what else? You can get a citation! And you can be towed!
Help us get to the emergency. The life we save just might be yours.
How'd you know?
The ball called!
Hey, look out for the pothole!
Every day, our brave troops and their families stand up for us.
For years, we've asked so much of so few.
Now we have a chance to serve these heroes.
To give time, offer comfort, or lend a hand.
To ease the burden on a military family.
Let's honor their service by volunteering ours.
LA City View Channel 35, your city, your channel.
This is Mr. Parks, Mr. Reyes, and Mr. Rosendahl. Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the city council meeting for Tuesday, Janu-, sorry, Tuesday, March 9th, 2010. We're here in the John Farrow Council Chambers, room 340 of City Hall. We meet here every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 AM. I wanna welcome members of the public who have taken time out of their day to be here, as well as our viewers on Channel 35, which for your convenience broadcasts throughout the city's cable system, these council meetings, and rebroadcast them in the evenings as well. We're also available for your convenience two other ways, through your telephone. You can call Council Phone, which is a service of the city in which you can listen into council meetings through your phone by calling 213-621-CITY, that's 213-621-CITY, or you can call in to listen to any of our committee meetings. Finally, you can use the internet, and we have live streaming webcasts of our council meetings. We archive all of our past council meetings, and we have our agendas, supporting materials that council members read, and all the reports available for the public as well, through our city's homepage at la-city.org. I wanna thank those council members who are here pursuing to council rules on time. It's council members Cardenas, Han, Weeza, Coetz, Krikorian, Perry, Smith, and Zion. That's nine members of our 15-member body, with Mr. Parks surviving, that's 10 members. We still are awaiting council members. Reyes is here, Councilmember Rosendahl, and Weston, if they'll please join us. So Mr. Alacon, Rosendahl, and Weston, but we do have a quorum, so Mr. Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Alacon, Cardenas, Han, Weeza, Coetz, Krikorian, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weston, Zion, Grecetti, 12 members present and a quorum. Mr. President?
First order of business, please.
Approval of the minutes.
All right, Mr. Zion moves and Mr. Smith seconds, without objection, those will be approved. Next order of business?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
All right, Mr. Parks moves and Mr. Labange seconds, without objection, those will be approved as well. Next order of business?
Mr. President, this is Tuesday and a flag salute.
I could ask you, ready council chambers, to please rise for our pledge of allegiance, and Mr. Reyes, if you'll lead us?
Thank you, Council President. Please stand up to the right hand of your heart, ready to begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Thank you, if we can run through the agenda, please.
Items 1 through 7 are street lighting district ordinances, notice for public hearing. There are cards on items 1 and 8.
Okay, we'll close the other items, public hearings, that's 2 through 7 and 9. Anybody wishing to call those special from the council? Seeing none, let's go ahead and take those up. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, those are approved. Number 10, if we can continue that...
Mr. President, you wish to continue that for one week?
Yes, please. Next items?
Items 11 through 13 are items for which public hearings have not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, if there's no objection, those are before us, 11 through 13. Members wishing to call any of those special? 11 through 13. Number 12, please. Number 12, Mr. Weeza. Number 13?
11.
Number 11 for Mr. Rosendahl?
Yeah.
With that, that leaves number 13, there's no card, so we'll close the public hearing on that, and if no member wishes to call 13 special, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Okay, that is approved as well. We'll go to general public comment now. Sean Murphy is our first speaker, we have two minutes of public comment per speaker. We have facilities here and also in Van Nuys and San Pedro for your convenience, and there's a clock to help you guys with time. Good morning, Mr. Murphy.
Good morning, City Council, Matt. Good morning, City Council. I'd like to tell you about a pro-life march that's coming up this Saturday in the valley. The Knights of Columbus, Van Nuys Council's hosting pro-life march. I hope you, some of you council members come out and march with us. It's gonna be, it's gonna start at Saint Zero's Catholic Church in Encino. I hope you guys come out and march. Second thing I'm not very happy about, Saint Patrick's Day is, I heard Saint Patrick's Day is canceled, I heard on ABC, Channel 7, last night. I'm not very happy about it and we're not, we're not gonna take it, we're gonna, some people are gonna, some Irish, there's a lot of Irish Americans out in L.A., we expect a Saint Patrick's Day march, it's, I don't like that, it's not a good idea. I hope you can reconsider that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy, Mr. Labange.
You know, the march has not been canceled, the parade is gonna be a celebration at the LA Live complex, but Sean, you're welcome to march from Alvera Street all the way down Main on the parade route, just make sure you only walk when the light is green in honor of Saint Patrick and don't get hit crossing the street. Okay.
Thank you very much. R.A. Buff is our next speaker. Did Mr. Richardson, do you wanna speak separately as well? It's, usually we have the card for each, so it's two minutes per speaker.
It's the reason we're here is to make the city aware of our new product. Our new product is to address the state's water shortage. What we have is a new technology subsurface watering system that waters underneath the surface. It will save you up to 70% on your current water usage. You have 0% runoff with the sprinkler system, it's subsurface. With the 0% runoff, you no longer have to face fines with our new water laws and our runoff. The replacement of sprinkler heads will no longer have to be, you will no longer need sprinkler heads with our system. Once again, it's our new technology. Our company wants to change the way that we water the world. A three-year study has been done by a state university in California. It approved our system, the best sub-watering system, and once again, we are the only subsurface watering system. It is not a drip system. It is on a timer. It is underneath the surface, when the timer comes on, it injects air into the roots at the root level, and then it waters right at the root level where the roots need it. Right now, if you water for two hours, you're only gonna get a quarter of an inch absorption. With our system, the absorption is already there, you only need water, it gets it where it needs it, right at the root level. Everything grows stronger, bigger, deeper, a richer green, and once again, we can cut your water usage in this city by up to 70%. And we all know what important that is with the state of California. Mr. Parks, I believe that you're involved with the Coliseum Commission. You wouldn't believe what we can do for your football field. University of Southern California could be running on the best football field in the nation. What it does for football fields is it grows deeper, stronger roots, therefore has a stronger tear force. When the cleats turn on it, it will not tear because the roots are deep. And something like the Coliseum, if you come in with your big trucks or any other events, after you clear that off, it will come back at a much faster rate. What we want to do is we want Los Angeles to be the first city on this system. Right now, we're in with Anaheim, but we want LA to be the first...
Sorry, sir, we have to keep it as even as possible, that's why the clock's there, but Mr. Richardson can continue if you'd like to. Mr. Richardson, did you wanna...
Could you pass those out to everybody, please?
Mr. Richardson, did you wanna speak as well? Okay, thank you very much, we appreciate your comments. Dr. Clyde Williams is our next speaker. Dr. Williams, you're next. After Mr., uh, sorry, after Dr. Williams will be Brady Potts.
Dr. Clyde Williams, 4115 Barrett Road, El Sereno, Northeast LA. Thank you for the Budget and Finance Committee meeting in El Sereno last night. Well, fairly well attended. But today, I'm talking about DWP. A report has been issued regarding DWP. What does it basically say? DWP is a mess. There's no strategic plan, although they've been trying to prepare one for over a year. We've been to several meetings, but now, everything falls silent because they don't want us to know where they're going. P&amp;A Consulting also doesn't really quite know where they're going. They use the words aspirational goals. That is, they don't know what they want to do, or they don't wanna tell us because it's gonna cost us a lot of money. And the rate increases that they're gonna be coming back to the county... And the rate increases that they're gonna be coming back to the council with will be roughly $30 per month, per connection, for electricity only. That works out to $360 a year, or $360 million for the city of Los Angeles, DWP. Didn't they have some rate increases before? Yeah, but they are coming back for more because they're finally starting to give us some numbers regarding how much it's gonna cost to do renewables, how much it's gonna cost to do coal conversion to geothermal, but they have found that geothermal in Imperial Valley won't quite work. So, they don't know what they're doing, or at least they don't want to tell us what they're doing in one consistent plan. We need a strategic plan for the DWP, much like the library. The library has an excellent plan. We need a solar plan, and we need a coal conversion plan.
Thank you very much, Dr. Williams. Brady Potts is our next speaker. After Mr. Potts will be Donna Perman out in Van Nuys. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, and thank you for your time. Members of the council, I'd like to speak today briefly about the importance of libraries in the ongoing budget crisis. My wife is a librarian at the Central Library, and I'd just like to share with you some of her answers to my daily question, "So, what did you do at work today?" She's helped high school students working on term papers and senior citizens setting up their first email accounts. She's helped immigrants find the information necessary to start their application for U.S. citizenship. She's helped small business owners, just starting out, find their way through the regulations and paperwork needed to start a small business in Los Angeles. She's helped production designers find out what would have been on the television in a New York advertising agency on the day JFK was assassinated. And she recently taught a Brownie troop how to look up census data and use newspaper archives to research their family trees and earn their genealogy merit badges. Now, my point is this: In an increasingly information-rich society, libraries offer an economy of scale and professional expertise that you simply cannot find elsewhere, and it is one that benefits entrepreneurs, private citizens, and civic associations. In short, they serve the common good, and I urge you, do not make cuts that will cripple this essential institution. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Potts. Well said. Donna Perman is our next speaker in Van Nuys. After that, we'll come back, and Ruth Rios here will be our next speaker. Good morning, Ms. Perman.
Hello, Mr. Garcetti. Anyway, Marion Fogler—I'm sorry, she couldn't be here. She's not feeling well. Hopefully, she'll be here tomorrow. When I spoke of the big white elephant in the room, I didn't mean I thought the CRA was physically there. I thought—people should know that. But its presence is felt with every budget cut. Our city suffers with huge layoffs. People who are laid off for no reason other than budget shortfall. We put employees on furlough. You just have to end up having to have more overtime to fix problems caused by furlough. You see water main breaks, transformers are blowing. The business insult is laying off hard-working employees, yet the council continues to misuse money, continues to give money to the CRA, the Grand Avenue Project, a new park in Garcetti's district, millions spent on L.A. River projects, beautification projects. What employee's supposed to do that, I wonder? Why do we only ask city employees to ask care of our shortfall? By the way, this—libraries also help people look up books and help people on computers, by the way. Anyway, shouldn't all of us help? Mr. Rosendahl, doesn't your constituent realize he or she is receiving services? He or she is giving? Giving? Shouldn't—if he or she doesn't want to give to the city of Los Angeles, now constituents should move. But first, before we ask the public to sacrifice, let's stop with wasteful spending. Luckily, we stopped the fee waivers. We need to get back the money owed now. We need to get real revenue from digital billboards, money from marijuana collectives. Don't close them. Let's get revenue, though I've read the state does get revenue from them, and let's ask for—to the state. So, let's ask Schwarzenegger to get our monies back from the—what they get from the collectives. We need to stop our wasteful spending, and let's stop going after city employees because they do well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perman. Ruth Rios is our next speaker. After that is Lupe Vazquez. Ms. Rios? Good morning.
Good morning. This is my—my name is Ruth Rios, and I am here this morning to express my deep disappointment and frustration on how this city council is prioritizing cuts towards city services during this financial crisis. It is no secret that there is a great need for shared sacrifices to be made in an effort to balance this deficit, but there truly, truly needs to be wise and sensible priorities. Cutting vital and essential emergency services to our hard-working residents of this great city is a very dangerous game, one that literally involves life and death, and one that you apparently do not take seriously for our residents. You are asking residents to share the sacrifices through higher taxes, surcharges, fees, cut services, furlough days, and layoffs. Then you have the boldness to turn around and cut our essential fire and paramedic services that could preserve our lives. Where's the sense in this? I implore you, council members, now is the time to please show great understanding and wisdom on how you consider these cuts. Protect our city vital services, meaning law enforcement, fire, and paramedic services. Please don't leave us vulnerable. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Perman. Lupe Vazquez is our next speaker. After that is Joyce Flores.
Hello, board members. My name is Lupe Vazquez. This is my first time speaking before the council. I'm a resident and a member of Hillside Village Property Owners Association, and I'm here to voice my concern over budget cuts affecting my local Fire Station 16. In my 50 years, I've dialed 911 twice. My husband, although relatively young, is disabled. When I called 911, Fire Station 16 was there within minutes. After that incident and under a doctor's care, we never thought we'd call again, but seven years later, we did. I don't know when I'll have to call them again, but I've always had faith that they would be there. Like my car insurance, I pay and pay, waiting for the day I might have to make that call. I understand budget cuts. I understand the economic cutbacks that must be made, and I hope you will take into consideration that we, as a community, feel it's possible for you to cut from the top, not from the guys that are out there waiting for our calls. Our community has a large senior citizen population, along with two elementary schools, a middle school, high school, and university, that also depend on these men that are right now waiting for our call. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much for your time as well. Joyce Flores is our next speaker, and after that is Morton Price. Good morning.
Good morning. My name is Joyce Flores. This is my first time speaking in front of council.
Welcome.
And I just wonder, who am I speaking with? Because no one seems to be listening.
If you could address the council as a whole, but we're listening. The video screens on people's desks have the encapsulated picture.
Okay. I am a resident of Hillside Village in El Sereno. I'm here this morning to express my great frustration and disappointment at the current state of financial emergency that we've arrived at. It angers me to see how lavishly and ignorantly our leadership has chosen to live even in times when there is a need for urgent financial restraint. I read here and see firsthand how businesses is conducted here in City Hall, and it doesn't surprise me in the least that we are in this current state of financial crisis. Now, it is up to you, the city council members, to figure a path out of damage control. Every one of you is being paid a great amount of money as a public servant, and now it is time for every one of you to earn that money. We, as residents, understand wholeheartedly that cuts are going to need to be made, and hopefully, they come more in the form of shared furloughs rather than job cuts. But even as this shared burden unfolds, there needs to be some wisdom demonstrated by our leaders on how these cuts are being made. Vital city services such as police and fire departments must take the highest consideration and priority because they are foundational pillars of any city, and without them, the standard of living within our great city will drop even more dramatically than it already has. We are not a third-world country. We, as citizens of Los Angeles, demand that you preserve these services for fire and law enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for taking the time to be down here. If I could ask folks on both sides of the road to please—if there's conversations—I know we have a big caucus in the aisle way—and as much as possible, if you could please take those conversations outside of chambers. Thank you. Morton Price is our next speaker. John Walsh will follow.
Good morning, Mr. President Garcetti of the council and council members. I am Morton Price with City of Los Angeles Bureau of Engineering. I'm a geologist with the Bureau of Engineering. My essential duties include clean up and investigation of underground tank fuel leak spills to our sites, such as fire stations, police stations, wrecking park facilities. We've all heard about MTV and Back to Groundwater, I'm sure. The threats of layoffs and furloughs would impact my work. We would not be able—the city would not be able to keep in line with state and Los Angeles Fire Department regulations regarding environmental compliance. Further, I also am also involved in emergency response, one the city has natural disasters such as landslides and earthquakes. And so, essentially, to wrap up, I'd just like to give an idea or two how we can save some money. Currently, we do utilize a lot of consultant forces to do a lot of our work. We may have in-house contracts that we could utilize in place of some of those consultants. We do need our consultants. They do fill in the gaps where we lack manpower and some expertise, but we can limit their scope and utilize more city staff and save money that way. In that respect, working together, I think we can help save the city money and then essentially keep our city folks on. That would keep the city running. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Price, and thank you for what you do. John Walsh is our next speaker. After that is Matt Dowd.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S. We're up to 37,000 hits a week, 75,000 a post, bi-weekly post, equivalent of the Long Beach Press Telegram's web traffic. That's what we're getting at our web. It's always nice to see John North here, a great journalist. Herb, aren't you gonna run for Congress? You'd be my congressman.
If you could address the council as a whole. Thank you.
Well, Herb—I'm just talking about Herbs, marijuana. Ladies and gentlemen, we want Herb Wesson to run for Congress. I live in that district. There was a major teachers' demonstration about cuts in Hollywood. Thanks to Channel 11, we saw the disgraceful act of someone with a gigantic poster of Obama with a Nazi Hitler mustache, and it said, "Impeach Obama." Now, if the right-winger had done that, it would have been heard all over the world. But corrupt union officials do it. It's on—it will be on our website, and it's okay. I think it's disgusting, and I think it's racist. How dare you call the President of the United States Hitlerite? We didn't even say that about Bush. Why? Because his skin is black, and not one of you will stand up and attack the union, and it's a teachers' union. I would like you to set—ladies and gentlemen, I just want you to know that I will be—we will be marching in the St. Patrick's Day parade. Because I'm half-Jewish, I will be marching only halfway. Ladies and gentlemen, if you want to read how I have been accused by a union official of plotting a triple murder, triple murder, call Howard Blum at the L.A. Times or go to HollywoodHighlands.org, the only place you can find out what's going on in the city. Zero, two minutes. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Matt Dowd is our next speaker. After that is Michael Cardion.
Okay, thank you. Yes, here's the conspiracy theory, one more step. I got a citation on Venice Beach. It was September of '09, undercover police for apparently selling a CD. And I thought it was a joke, and I didn't even go to the court date or anything, and the next thing you know, they dragged me into court on Friday. Yes, three undercover—see, that's where the money's gone in the city. Like undercover investigations of a guy's performing—see, I'm in the middle of a performance, too. And that's what they failed to mention. This is the police information from court. So, here's what happened. They came up to me, and the undercover officer asked the defendant, "How much for this CD?" Dowd replied, in the middle of a show, "$10." The officer produced one $5 bill and five $1 bills, because I'm sure they wanted me to count them and go, "Oh, yes, it's $10. This is a sting, remember, of a performer with some First Amendment, totally intangible. It's not a hat or anything. This is something you put in your car and listen to the music." So, attempted to hand it to the defendant. Dowd stated, "Put it in the tip bucket." That's what they're saying. I didn't say anything. I was in the middle of a show. I just indicated. They threw the money in the jar and walked off with the CD. You know, if you're—if you're a car dealer and someone's selling you—and you're selling a car for $5,000, go, "Yeah, okay, five"—someone walks up in the middle of another deal, and they say, "5,000." Oh, here it is in a suitcase. Do you count the money, or do you—and you let him drive off with the Mercedes, or whatever it is?
Thank you, Mr. Dowd. Michael Cardion is our next speaker. After that is Roy Stone.
Morning. This is Michael Cardion. Once again, till—to this date, I'd like everybody here to know that Mr. Reyes in his office still hasn't cleaned their property. That is disgusting. But I guess that's one way to save money. Screw the citizens of L.A. Do not clean the property. Do not do what you pledged to do. Do not take up—a let the taxpayer live in filth, at least in Mr. Reyes's district. If you want to lay somebody off, look at these people behind you, all standing around doing nothing. All your employees, lay them off. They sit here and they do nothing. They sit down and they eat their breakfast while they're here in city council, and they're supposed to—I don't know what they're doing here, having breakfast on taxpayer dollars, but I guess that's what Mr. Reyes's office does best. They don't clean up after themselves. They just get a big fat paycheck. I was listening to a city council the other day, and you voted to give internet subscribers $3.5 million or not collected. Shame on you. Shame on all of you who voted for that. You're not taking $3.5 million for the internet, and yet you're laying off people. I don't know how you guys sleep at night, but I guess, once you're a hypocrite, you're always a hypocrite. Talk to the person who can't pay his mortgage. Talk to the people who live in rat-infested neighborhoods because you don't clean them, but yet large corporations are getting $3.5 million back. Shame on you. It's disgusting to be a citizen of this great city when you guys squander the money away, and then you get upset when people come here and confront you with it.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Do you want to say something?
Thank you, Council President. Just for the record, and welcome back, Mr. Cardion. There's three or four structures in question. They are essentially scheduled to be torn down. The city's building a bridge over by Soto, Huntington Drive. There's a confluence of streets. They're gonna be taken down, and I share that boundary with Councilman Weezer. So, we're both working on this. I want to thank my staff because we got necessary tests already in place. We're working with Caltrans. It's a multi-jurisdictional issue, so these are abandoned structures that have been cleaned up, and we will tear them down. And I just want to make sure that was stated for the record.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Thank you for that clarification. Roy Stone, and then after that is Rick Nightingale out in Van Nuys. Good morning, sir.
Thank you. What does it take to give a family comfort in hard times, to take an at-risk youth the push in the right direction? What does it take to make a welcoming place for a senior, or give help to a job hunter, to find the book for the student doing a report? What makes a difference to adding hard-working librarians and other city employees to the long lines of the unemployed, or slashing salaries so that those on barely making it budgets will wonder how long they can get by? What does it take to get the CAO to look creatively at the budget deficit, to contemplate the entire budget and all departments and areas to get to a resolution? What does it take to make our Los Angeles community stable and respectable this year, this generation, and beyond? The answer is, of course, you, our city council.
Thank you, Mr. Stone. Our next and last speaker for general public comment is in Van Nuys. Our next and last speaker for general public comment is in Van Nuys, Mr. Rick Nightengale. Good morning, sir.
Yeah, Rick Nightengale. You know, you people are like, you're the captain of the Titanic. And when the Titanic got, was sinking, the captain says, "Hey, man, nobody can use the lifeboats, because if one can't go, none of you are going to go. We're going to wait for another ship to come along to get beside so we can be rescued." That's the government to you. So they throw you, you know, the guy, another boat comes, but it's a little boat. So they take, they're children, and everybody else stays on it. The captain says, "I'm sorry, you can't have the lifeboats, because y'all can't go, so you're going to all sink and die." That's exactly what you're doing. Every one of you people, the only one that I haven't seen is Mr. Parks, that says, "Layoffs and so forth, we have to cut." And every one of you people are fighting, "Oh, we can't do that. These are our own people. Oh, we can't do that. What are we going to do?" So it's just going to go down and down and down. You can't face reality. You people have your head where it shouldn't be, where the sun don't shine. And it's been like that for six months to a year. You know it's coming, you know it's coming, you know it's coming, and you won't do nothing about it. It's your job. I think the people, the more educated you are, the more stupid you people are, because you just can't think reality. Because when you aren't really super-educated sometimes, you think of reality. You think beyond the box, and you people can't think beyond the box. You think the government is going to keep bailing you now all the time, and you just keep giving it more to the poor, the poor, the poor. I realize the poor need it, but now everybody's going down with the ship. The people that are paying the money are going down with the ship, and the poor don't pay nothing, except for take, take, take. And the people that are keep paying in the middle class, we can't survive, because you people have your head where it don't, don't shine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nightengale. We missed your sunny comments, but it's good to have you back. With that, we will close our general public comments, and we'll go to items called special, starting with number one. John Walsh has a card in for that item, which is a street lighting district at Ardmore Avenue and San Marino Street.
I think the city of Los Angeles does an excellent job on streetlights. Excellent. I think there are certain areas that are underserved, particularly Highland Park. The side streets are very dark when I'm there. I think you're doing a great job. You know, and I know, as far as giving everything to the poor, I wish you'd tell 50 or 60 people sleeping in front of my house that they're getting all the money, and it's not going downtown to the super graphics people. I've been accused of a triple murder. HollywoodHighlands.org. The news stories are there. H-I-G-H-L-A-N-D-S.
That will close our comments on item number one. Anybody from the council wishing to be heard on this? If not, let's prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Next, we have number eight. Mr. Walsh, if you want to come forward again. This is on protest on Little Tokyo Business Improvement District.
I'll wave.
Mr. Walsh waves that. We'll close our public comments. If we can, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay, that is approved. Next item, please.
Item 11, called special, by Councilmember Rosendahl, and there are cards on that.
Okay, Mr. Rosendahl, would you, do you have any preference of whether we go to cards first, or did you want to be heard on that first?
Talking about item number 11, yeah, I'd like the city staff to come up and just give us an update. That's what I'd like. This is, item is to address the fiscal year.
This is for bargaining instructions to be given. It's agendized for closed session. Obviously, we can take parts in open session, but it's just a standing item, so I don't know if there's an update per se that isn't a closed-session confidential thing about negotiations.
Not in a closed session. I just want to know if I have anything to publicly report at this point.
Do you want to hone in anything more on specifically what you're wanting to hear from them, on anything?
No, I'd like to just see where they're at.
Okay, who would you like?
Update's always helpful, especially when we're trying to move quickly.
Yeah, no, I agree. I'm just trying to help direct them on, what do you want to be updated on about the budget? Anything in particular?
They can come sit there, and I'll just play around a little bit.
And who would you like? And, Mr. Rosendahl, you just said staff. Who would you like, just so we can look and see?
We're a CAO. Come on up. The CLA.
Mr. Miller.
And anybody else that has something to say at this point about budget balancing matters and, you know, before we go in, if we do go into closed session. Just a deep breath, some of us were there last night in the Budget Committee. All five of us were there last night over in El Sereno, and there was some tremendous angst about how we're doing. And Jerry, you gave a report last night. If you could just give us a quick synopsis of where you see us at at this point.
Certainly. Well, in broad terms, I'm stating obvious here, but the council has been meeting daily and has made significant progress in trying to prop up the reserve fund for this year. It's certainly going to be well above 30, and we should be back to you within the next week on the actions that you've taken and what the revised reserve fund projection is going to be. The deficit we're facing next year is somewhere in the order of anywhere from $485 to $600 million, depending upon how much we have left in the reserve. And as you know, we are looking at a variety of options to balance that budget. The council has instructed that 4,000 positions be eliminated, and we're looking at what that would look like. Shortly, department heads will start reporting to the council on identifying those positions and assessing the impact finally.
Let me just ask you a couple of questions. Today's LA Times and today's New York Times have two stories that I think are of great interest. The LA Times piece ends with Schwarzenegger has eliminated furloughs from his proposed budget for the fiscal year that begins July 1, replacing them with a 5% across-the-board pay cut, a 5% increase in what state employees must contribute to their pensions, and a 5% payroll cut to be reached through staff reductions and other measures. That's the state making an effort at their moment. We're all in the boat together. When they attack us, you know, they can attack every city, every county, every state in the nation that is going through these budget crises. Frankly, if I had my way, Obama would throw some stimulus money at the states and help us through that. But barring that at the moment, what do you think about what he's saying there? Is there any implications or any way in which we can appreciate it or not appreciate that?
There are. And the fact of the matter is, is I've stated before, we need to bring down our payroll. We're 85% salary and benefit-related, and the only way to do that is you reduce the number of people you have, or you reduce what you pay them. So all of those issues that you're discussing there are issues, I think, that need to be discussed, and the specific instructions to your negotiators should happen in closed session. But yes, those are all ways of reducing the payroll instead of reducing the number of people. Either way can get you there.
Yeah, I look forward to that discussion. Last thing is the New York Times piece today. All the big boys, you know, are moving out of the stock market and going into bonds. Still, our pension funds stay very active in stock. They say it's a risky business, so they're going into bonds. Do we have any sense, when I read this this morning, it was kind of compelling, do you have any sense of where we're going with our pension situation? Because obviously, it ends up an issue for us.
Well, I think pension managers need to address that specifically, but the portfolios are broad and diversified. There are stocks, there are corporate bonds, there are, there is real estate, there are a variety of investments, and they have limits on each type of investment they can invest in to try to keep the portfolio diversified. It is important to note that while we lost a great deal of money in our pension systems, our pension systems experienced less of a loss than the market in general did, and that goes to the need for having a diversified portfolio.
Okay, that's a key question, and I appreciate that answer. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. And if no other members wish to be heard on this, this doesn't require any action, but we do have some cards on this. So Dr. Clyde Williams, if you'd like to come forward. Again, this is for bargaining instructions for our CAO in light of the budget situation. Thank you.
Dr. Clyde Williams, El Sereno. Again, thank the Budget Committee, Budget and Finance Committee for their meeting last night in El Sereno. This particular item seems to recur every meeting, but what do we get from it? Do we know right now as to what are the current levels of service? What are the current number of positions? And what is the current budget for each department? No. Nor do we know how many positions will be lost, how much money will be reduced, or what the level of services will be in one year from now or in five years from now? Nobody knows. Can't we get a scorecard? And Mr. Wizar and I have been discussing scorecards. We're using one right now for testing water conservation in the Sierra Club. So it's a very simple system. Why can't we have it so that we know how many positions we have yet to go? Because giving bargaining instructions, I haven't heard any. Giving budget balancing matters, I haven't heard any. Today, we were given a little bit of information, but where are we going? And when will we arrive, before July 1, hopefully, at reducing the staff by 4,000 positions? It seems a very simple thing to do, but it isn't being done. So I would highly recommend that the department heads come and give you what they're going to do in order to achieve it by April 1. Thank you.
Donna Perman is our next speaker out in Van Nuys.
Hello. Anyway, people already, who are working for the city, are already, in a sense, getting a pay cut, because they haven't had a pay raise in six years. What we need to do is get rid of the CRA. They're the ones that are reason why we're having a budget deficit. When we spend millions of dollars on the Grand Avenue project, when we give millions of dollars and all there's are like 38 projects, this is the problem, or why we're having problems with budget shortfall. City employees have already did their sacrifice. We need to find a sacrifice somewhere else. We don't need to have lots of parks put up and people, when the central services are being cut back. Let's see, our city suffers with us huge when we do layoffs, when we do budget cutfalls. The public are the ones that are going to suffer with lost services. How can we ask for them to have lost services when we have the CRA? A lot of people are not bringing up about the CRA and all the projects, and how come we don't have our tax increment dollars? We need to unfreeze the tax increment dollars, and so that we have this money available to save the city services. Let's see, and why do we only ask the city employees to take care of the shortfall? First, let's get rid of the CRA, and then I believe that we would probably even have extra money if we got just rid of the CRA. That's what we needed to do, folks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perman. John Walsh is our next speaker here, and then Shannon Salmon is after that.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. I agree with you. We must eliminate positions. It is sad, it's true, you have to bite the bullet, but let's chop from the top. I propose a city council charter amendment on the next ballot, and it will reduce the city council from 15 to 10. I'd very much like to see five of you gone. I think that the city council will be shorter, more streamlined, and it will work better, and you will be showing Christ-like, I hope I'm not offending any Islamists or Judaismists, Christ-like in the way you are willing to die for our sins, your political careers, to die for our sins. Let's chop from the top. Let's have a city council. Or we can go back to charter cities. The charter cities in the state, only five. As far as working a deal, my union, the teachers' union, already worked a back-room deal. The deal is simple. The teachers' union has agreed to all the cuts. The Times has not printed it yet, in exchange for a deal where they got control, the union of 15 schools. That was the deal. If you don't believe me, call Howard Blum at 1-800-L-A-TIME, and also ask him, "Who was the teacher union vice president who accused me of a triple murder?" In front of Howard Blum, 1-800-L-A-TIME. The story they won't print, that I have been accused, and my reputation of committing a triple murder.
If we can come back to this item, thank you.
I know. Maybe you should have me arrested over here as a suspect. HollywoodHighlands.org. What's happening in the city is beyond imagining, and it's not appearing in any of the newspapers. HollywoodHighlands.org. 37,000 a week.
Shannon Salmon, or?
Chris, Eric, thank you. Will you take a note?
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you. My name is Shannon Salmon. I am the teen librarian at the Playa Vista branch for the Los Angeles Public Library. I want to say that we need to stop looking at cutting jobs, layoffs, to solve our budget problems. This Sunday, I went to the Apple Store, and I bought a new iMac and a little iPod that's purple. I did this because I have a job. I then had brunch at a swank little place near the beach with my friends. I did this because I have a job. On Friday, I bought three giant bags of dog food for my two rescued dogs. I did this, and I can do this, because I have a job. On March 1, I paid the mortgage on my condo that I bought two years ago, because I have a job. The unemployment rate in Los Angeles right now is 14%, 12, 14%. It's not helping the economy. We need people to have jobs. If you guys aren't thinking about ways to create jobs, then you're hurting the future of LA. Saving jobs should just be a second thought. It should be just something to do, and the first thing should be figuring out ways to create jobs. Right now, I'm here speaking on behalf of the libraries. We want to save the library positions. We want the libraries to stay open, because one of the main, one of many things that we do is offer people places to find jobs. We have, we have lots of resources to help people find jobs, and that's probably 50% of the people that we're seeing right now is people looking for jobs. So we've set up a website. It's www/savethelibrary.org, and we hope you'll support us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for what you do. Matt Dowd is our next speaker. After Mr. Dowd will be Henry Gamble.
All right. Yes, I don't have a job. I rely on donations for my street performing until undercover police come and throw you in jail for First Amendment protected expression that's meant to be encouraged by the city of Los Angeles under their ordinance. But that's the city attorney. You want to drag him and find out what's going on with the Matt Dowd CD, which is now a collector's item, because it's evidence now in here. Oh, yes, here it is.
If you can come back to the budget, please. Thank you.
$40,000 is what it's going to cost for you to assemble a jury to go through all this. That's budgetary item right there. Anything to do with Matt Dowd right now. You already had to pay $500,000 to the federal court for Michael Hunt, Matt Dowd. That's me. Hello. Someone remind Bill Rosendahl and Greg Smith, because they're not listening. I was here three weeks ago. I said, "Put all your money into Visa if you're going to be in the stock market." They were $84. The market went down 700 points, and Visa withheld that all, and now they're over 90. So now you sell, Greg Smith. The stock market's not going to help the city of Los Angeles, and I'll tell you why. There's a structural deficit in the city, and I'll tell you what that means. You had the pension fund, which supplied all the pension money, but now the fund is gone, because you let the laces pensioners run off with all the money, with all their brokers on Wall Street. So you have to pay the pension money, because it's in the charter, and it's 650 million. You've got $3 billion in outstanding bonds, people, that you owe bondholders, Bill Rosendahl. So don't get into the bond business. The city owes their bondholders $3 billion. You borrowed a billion on your projected revenue for this year, which is not going to be a billion. You owe 660 million, so you're running on $300 million every year from here on. Go to Chapter 9. It's on Google. Look up Chapter 9.
Thank you. Henry Gamble is our next speaker, and after that will be Hillary George. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, members of the council. I'm Henry Gamble. I'm the young adult librarian at the Palisades Branch, and I've talked to you several times before in the previous weeks about what we do for the youth and the teens of the city, but I'd like to provide a voice today for what we do for senior citizens. If there was such a job as a senior citizen librarian, I would apply for it, because I love them, and they're the ones I love serving the most. At our branch at the Palisades, every night, we get senior couples that come in, and they know that when they need advice for their know that when they need advice for their stock portfolios, that we have the value line. They cannot afford to pay $1,000 a year. They also know that we have the New York Times, the LA Times, the Wall Street Journal, and the Palisadean Post that they can read because they can't really afford to subscribe to it. We also are a place that has Saturday matinee movies, because they don't want to pay $13 plus drinks and all the costs for transportation to get there, and we provide a free movie. A couple months ago, we showed guys and dolls, and we packed the joint. They appreciate it so much, the free popcorn, the Sees candy, the free drinks that we give them, and they thank us endlessly. We're immensely supported for that by our Friends Association as well. I also want to say that our branch is our place where seniors come and serve. Our grandparent reading program, where we have six senior citizens that come on a daily basis to read to the children. My good friend Sal Forty comes every Saturday in the morning. Sal has reached a point in his life where he needs an oxygen tank, but he comes in and he reads to the kids and gives them great delight, and knows that what he's doing is giving his life great purpose and enhancing their literacy, which is so very important. So please, with community centers being far away and costly for them to get to, our libraries are a place for them to be. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for what you do as well. Hillary George is next. After Ms. George will be Oleg Kagan. Good morning.
Hi. I'm a children's librarian at the Durant branch in Hollywood, and these are some maps that the children drew from their house to the library. You can see that Theo has to go along the Hollywood Boulevard, past the Famous Stars, and then by McDonald's before he gets to us. Nine, I can think of nine U librarians, if we go through with the layoffs, in my area of 13 libraries, who will be gone just at the first round. This is why it's really important that we think of creative solutions, other than layoffs, to help the libraries stay open. We just had a meeting with Tom Labon's counsel about those kind of creative solutions, and some of the things discussed are collecting fines that are already owed to the library. Can we have a special card where people are allowed to donate $50 to the library when they join? Is it a possibility to have voluntary layoffs? There might be people in jobs who can't quit because they won't be eligible for unemployment, but they're unhappy in their jobs. Can we let them go? Disney is giving a $200,000 grant to support heritage events for Heritage Month. The library celebrates heritage and cultural diversity year-round. Might Disney want to give us some money? Could other large corporations want to give us money? There's a lot of money in this city, and there's a lot of library supporters. Let's all work together so that we can get the two matched up. I'm proud to live in a city where children know how to draw a map from their house to their neighborhood library. Let's keep it that way.
Thank you very much. Thank you for what you do. Oleg Kagan, and then after that is Hillary St. George. Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Honorable counsel, my name is Oleg Kagan. I work at the Will and Ariel Durant Library. It's in Tom Labon's district. I am an MC, a messenger clerk. That means I shelve books. So I'm a city employee, and I have been a city employee for the last eight years, have been coming to the library as a volunteer, as a patron, since I was about that big, about three feet tall. And I'm still coming to the library as a patron and as a person who works there. Now, I heard my first city council meeting last week online, and a lot of people were talking about gutting the library. And we're talking about gutting the library by firing employees. We don't need to fire employees. Now, in the committee that Tom Labon chaired this morning, I named names of patrons that are affected by the cuts to services and staff in libraries. These patrons represent the community that is organized in the library. We need to maintain this community. Now, gutting libraries is important. Guts are important. But the community is the heart. The library is the heart of the community. Our staff, our patrons are family. Don't separate families. Don't tear out the heart of the community. Don't fire employees. There are creative solutions. Let's work on those. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Oleg. Hillary St. George is our last speaker on this item.
Good morning. My name's Hillary St. George. I'm also a librarian at the Durant branch in Hollywood, and I am also the mother of a two-year-old daughter, and I apologize for the members who this might be a little repetitious for, but I'm going to speak to how the potential layoffs we're talking about are going to affect not only the library system, but our city as a whole. Let me start by saying that I am afraid for my daughter. I'm afraid she's going to grow up in a city where we're supposed to provide her with these basic tools necessary to distinguish between things like Wikipedia and more legitimate sources of information. And I'm also afraid that our children are going to grow up to be adults who don't possess those basic information-seeking skills, that they'll be ill-equipped to do things like search for jobs or educate themselves outside the classroom. I'm afraid our children will grow up uninformed or misinformed about the things that will have such a great impact on their lives. These things may sound abstract to you, but in our computer age, where everything is so computer-oriented, these things are vital to the growth of our city. Under the current proposals being discussed, our librarian system will lose. Most of our city librarians were under the age of 40. And I know Councilman Wesson took offense, meaning that I thought that librarians over 40 were irrelevant, and that's not what I mean at all. What I mean to imply is that librarians under 40 grew up in the digital age, using computers, and that that's so vital to our constituents who are under 40, who are using computers in all facets of their lives. I think that the city ought to consider budget cuts, or layoffs, rather, as the last resort rather than the first resort, especially when it comes to our educational positions such as our libraries, because people need them now so much more than they did before when we have a city with an unemployment rate of 12%. And I think the last thing that we want to do is add to that 12%. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. St. George, and thank you for what you do as well. There's no other members, there's no action required on this. Let's go to item 12, and that was called special by Mr. Weezer. We do have cards on this, Mr. Weezer. Do you want to hear those first? Okay. We have first Philip Wyreter, and then Pat McCosker.
With the council's permission, could I be the second speaker, sir?
Sure. Yeah, Pat McCosker. You want to come forward? It's your first.
Morning, Mr. President, council members. Thank you. Pat McCosker, President, United Firefighters of Los Angeles City. You know, you have before you this motion today that talks about closing 10 more ambulances on top of the nine you're already closing every day, the 15 fire companies, the three paramedic captains and battalion command team that you're already closing every day. I hope you'll defeat this motion. I can't think of anything in a budget crisis that would save so little money and yet cost you and the citizens of this city so much. As you know, when you close these resources, we're going to continue to respond and do everything we can to save every life we can, but we're going to get there later. We're going to tie up paramedic ambulances on calls that shouldn't have tied up paramedic ambulances if we'd had these basic life-support ambulances available. Now, we're going to lose a life because there's no paramedic available to respond. So I urge you to defeat this motion. This is wrong. There's plenty more that can be done. This morning, we agreed to a contract that saves you $12 million. $12 million more in sacrifices out of the pockets of firefighters this morning. Do not close these resources. Don't take these resources away from your communities. You know, the proposal is to close them in outlying areas of the city, like El Surino and West Hills and Wilmington, places where they're not surrounded by other fire stations and have other resources that can quickly fill, and it's going to take lots of time to get out there. And so responses will go from three and four minutes to eight, 10, and 12 minutes for paramedics. 10 years ago, we had a crisis in this city. Our paramedic system was going down the drain. You made a commitment. You fixed that. You responded to that by putting an ambulance in every station in the city. Don't go back on that now. Don't close any more ambulances. Work with us to reopen the ones that are already closed. We're doing our part, and we ask you to do yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. We'll come back to Philip Wyreter. Do you want to come forward now, sir? After that is Dr. Clyde Williams. Oh, hold on. If we can, please, take a pause. We'll take a temporary recess for a second.
We'll have a heart attack. Follow the librarian.
Colleagues, I think we have the situation under control. We can ask folks to return to their seats, please. Okay, colleagues, so we're going to recommence the meeting, adjourn the meeting. We do have public comments. I'd ask council members to please, unless they're directly dealing with that situation, to please direct their attention to the podium again. Thank you, Mr. Wyreter. If you'd like to come forward now.
Mr. President, I'd like to withdraw my comment section for this time, please.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it. Our next speaker then is Raylene Allard. After that is Luanna Allard. Good morning, ma'am.
My name is Raylene Allard. I'm a member of Hillside Village Property Owners Association, and this is my first time to speak in front of the council.
Thank you for coming.
To reiterate a lot that I spoke at the budget meeting last night, I took exception to the OCA's meeting, a report on the Fire and Police Efficiency Working Group summary, in that there was no mention of any new fire classes for the fire department, but there's two courses being started for the police department. The move of personnel from the ambulance, the cuts, and everything in the fire department, and still not as much. Part of this is just really, it's incomprehensible that the city can even think of cutting our paramedic units, particularly after you did one cut already and you have another 12. The city budget is approximately $7 billion. The police department gets $1.2 billion. The fire department has $500 million. Tell me where the equity is between the two departments. It's just incomprehensible, losing another thing. Now, shame on you for even considering cutting the paramedics. Why do you feel that you can take our health and safety in your hands and do away with our paramedics? I hope when any one of you have a heart attack, that you'll call someone, and they'll be there. I certainly want a paramedic to come to me. I'm an asthmatic. If I have a massive asthma attack and go into cardiac arrest because I can't have a paramedic, I have instructed my family to sue the city for the lack of having the resources there to take care of me, resources that all the city pays for.
Thank you, ma'am. Luanna Allard is our next speaker. After that is Dr. Clyde Williams.
My name is Luanna Allard, and I'm president of Hillside Village Property Owners Association in the City of LA. We're in the northeast edge of the city, and we only have one fire station that backs us up that's close by. We're not surrounded by four other stations like most of the city. We're all by ourselves, with many schools and a university all in the hills. We recently lost a neighbor. It took over nine minutes for an ASL bus to arrive on scene. Needless to say, there was a tragedy. With firemen requirements and leaving the department, retirements, excuse me, and leaving the department, there are no new classes to schedule what is left. But there are two new police classes scheduled. With all the budget layoffs, how can you justify hiring more police during this budget crisis? I'm not saying that we don't need more police, but at this time, we need to make do with what we have. We fought long and hard to get a BLS unit in Fire Station 16. Now you want to take away our paramedics. We've been told several times by the fire department that hilly areas will not be affected and be able to keep our services and equipment that are in our station now. Did you notice that we live in a high-fire, hilly area? We are being treated like second-class citizens. We all pay taxes for these kinds of services. One of the council members asked at a meeting last night, would it be fair to cut a librarian or someone who works at Parks and Recreation instead of the fire personnel? My answer is, can a librarian save my life? Can he administer drugs and transport me and keep me alive? I don't know about you, but I refuse to call a librarian to save my life. We all know that the budget cuts are affecting everyone in the city, but you have no right to cut the health and safety of me or anyone in the city.
Thank you very much, ma'am. Dr. Clyde Williams is next. After that is Donna Perman in Van Nuys.
Dr. Clyde Williams, El Surino, member of the LA 32 Neighborhood Council Board. And yes, we seem like second-class citizens out in northeast, especially in El Surino, because we're at the end of the line. There's not much beyond us. We don't get services from Al Hamra. We don't get services from the county. We don't get services even from South Pasadena. In fact, they have barriers for us. So what are we asking for? We're asking for our EMS. Keep it there in El Surino. We need it probably more than fire, because we also have maybe, right now, 50 to 60 people who have been trained in certs. Why? Because we're concerned about our fire danger also, whereas, now, we don't know what is happening to our medical services. Does everyone get the same level of medical service? So far, I haven't been able to figure out, number one, the current brownout deployments, the proposed deployments, and what's going to happen during the bushfire season, when further stations will be redeployed in order to protect those areas which have not been fire- fire-proved as far as the bush is concerned. So, yeah, we feel that maybe in the east side, we get less services than the west side, maybe the south-central side gets less services than from the valley. We'd like to see the information to document the current deployments, and the proposed deployments, and their response times. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Williams. Donna Perman in Van Nuys is next, she'll be followed by John Walsh back in chambers.
Okay, anyway, Walter Moore said that $680 million the CRA has, and it's running in the green, so how can we get rid of the basic life support rescue ambulances? CRA wants this, CRA gets money from the developers, the CRA wants to store us. We would have money for ambulances. So how can you close what's really essential, especially if it's life-threatening? Can you, what happens when you get sued and somebody dies? Perhaps the CRA would offer its millions to save lives. City employees already give with no raises for six years, so how can you ask for them to give up ambulances? No more, anyway, we need, no more cuts on the city employees. Let's get it from the CRA. We need our ambulance services. If someone dies, or is ruined physically, and you get sued, will you then say that this is wrong? We don't, people always have emergencies everywhere, and then we have our elderly people who have, that need to have the ambulances there within minutes. And you talk about getting rid of ambulances in areas that have very little stations. This is wrong to do that. This is wrong as long as we have the CRA. And right now, myself and Marion Fogler are the only ones that are talking about the CRA, who's stealing all our money that could be used for city services. We wouldn't have to do these cutbacks, we wouldn't have to cut back on these ambulances if the CRA would offer up its money and take care of the city, because basically, we haven't taken care of the city council for years, so let's the city council take care of us now. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. John Walsh is our next speaker, after that is John Miller.
You know, it's amazing, they won't tell you what's happening in the council. You're lying to the people. Right now, there are paramedics here. It took them 15 minutes to get here. You called a recess. You're lying to the whole city. Talk about irony. What happens? While you're talking about cutting off our ambulances, somebody, is that person gonna die over there? Someone fell down? Someone collapsed on your side? Who was it? They think it's their city. They're trying to cover this up. They have a stretcher right here. There's TV carrying, and if, God bless television, because if there wasn't any television, we wouldn't know what was happening. Howard Finn, the councilman, dropped dead in this council chamber. Who remembers that? I'm telling you right now, it struck you, and it took 15 damn minutes for them to come, because you took nine emergency ambulances out, and now you want to take nine, 10 more. The only way you're gonna find out what's happening in this city, and you're not gonna find in the LA Times, is Hollywood Highlands.org. Now, I demand, do you tell us what is happening in this council right now, Eric? Why is there paramedics here?
So if you could address the council as a whole, please. If you could address the council as a whole, please.
I'm addressing you, the boss. What is happening as a whole?
Thank you, sir.
15 hoes. What is happening now?
Do you have anything you need to add?
I want to hear the stretcher of the council.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is, our next speaker is John Walsh, sorry, it's John Miller. It's John Miller. No, sir, and we had treatment within 30 seconds of someone whose privacy I'm protecting because they're a private individual, okay? Thank you very much.
I'm a professor.
And if you had the same thing happen to you, I wouldn't be announcing your name.
Not on the public side, you're on the public side.
Sir, sir, you're done. John Miller is our next speaker, after that is Matt Dowd.
Good morning, Council President, Council Members, John Miller, President, Fire Department Chief Officers Association. The Fire Department has provided this council with its plan for achieving its share and sacrifice on the budget deficit. It has or is projected to meet this goal for this fiscal year. It is unfortunate of the appearance that the LAFD isn't being recognized as a leader for public safety and made a priority. While this governing body has determined the expectations of service, it is now necessary to allow the Fire Chief, Chief Peeks, the ability to plan, staff, equip, budget, train, and deploy members and resources to perform these bodies, or these duties, excuse me. This body and the residents expect certain services to be performed by the city. These services include public safety, but more specifically, fire suppression, emergency medical services, fire prevention, and public education, just to name a few. We don't have to look too far back in the city's history to know what we will be faced with in the future. Another significant incident that the citizens of LA will expect the city to effectively handle, and I could tell you here in front of you all today, that the Fire Department performs its responsibilities with effectiveness and efficiency on a daily basis. But we can't do it with resources being cut. The council should reinforce its commitment to continuing these services and allow the Fire Chief, the department's general manager, the ability to work within its defined budget and determine the most effective and efficient operational service level within the budgetary limits and constraints provided by the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, and thank you for what you do as well. Matt Dowd is our next speaker, after that will be Michael Cohen in Van Nuys.
So, yes, first of all, if you're wondering what happened over there, someone collapsed, they fainted. We had the basic life support people right here, and there's the perfect example of why you need them. And it just breaks my heart that the city of Los Angeles, we warned about these kind of things happening at least two years ago, and here's how to keep them, but unfortunately, the city of Los Angeles is in a catch-22, because you're committed to paying the pension funds, and that's the problem here. You need these laser pension commissioners back in here, we need to figure out how to get out of that deal, because they can run off and do anything they want with all these fire and police people and city employee money, and then when it's all gone, the city of Los Angeles right here has to carry the can. And so the structural deficit is going to be here every year. $600 million plus, even more, because of the early retirements that you have to pay for. So you have to go to Chapter 9 and just deal with it, and restructure all these things so that we can keep the emergency things that we need. See, the longer you service the debts, and you make, issue new bonds and collect new interest, it's just debt upon debt that you have to service, and more and more of these fire people are gonna be cut. So it's a structural thing, and I don't know how many times I have to tell you, get the CAO up here, get the CLA over here, and tell them to, am I wrong? Is this a never-ending thing, as long as we're in this pension thing? Because the money's gone. They lost it. There's no, the Wall Street's not gonna go to like $30,000 on the Dow, and all of a sudden, oh yeah, we're rich again. It's over. Restructure now so that we can save the essential things in the city.
Michael Cohen is our next speaker in Van Nuys. After that, we'll come back with Luis Gonzalez.
Michael Cohen, receded. Great LA day, it's a brisk day out today, also my birthday. However, like most city residents, my primary contact with the city is usually through DWP, getting the bill, the trash pickup, street services type of thing. There's one, there's one area that, to me and to many others in my generation, is so important, and that's paramedics. My mother's twice has been, had to use paramedic services. 98, my dad died, and we had an incident at my house. When you need a paramedic, when you need emergency services, you need it now, and you need it no matter where you are in the city. I don't think we can start playing kind of Russian roulette as to cutting out paramedics in various areas and thinking that we're gonna be actually, in the long run, saving money. I think it's gonna cost us a lot more. I'm probably much more likely to use a paramedic service than police. If I wasn't involved in neighborhood councils and activism in general, I probably wouldn't even know exactly where to park downtown to even get to City Hall. But one thing I do know is, when you need a paramedic, when you need an emergency service, you need it now, there is no time to wait. And, you know, we had a bit of an incident of that today that pretty much dramatized that. So, do not cut back. There are many other places that you can save a couple of million dollars, not on our health and safety. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cohen. Luis Gonzalez is our next speaker, after that is Bob Brustoff.
Good morning, Council. Thank you for the opportunity. I am a resident of El Cerrano Hillside Village for 35 years, and first and foremost, I want to thank the gentleman that did come by last night to hear me out. February 23rd, my father died from a heart attack. Yes, I am the son that lost a proud parent. It's not the easiest thing to do. Mr. Smith, thank you last night, Rosendal, Marah Parks, VISA, but you have to understand, Station 16s, that's all we have. You cut 16s, northeast of us, Hillside Village, far down the university, the 710, the community, it's done. The ambulance had to come from Station 2s, Sessa Chavez. Didn't make it. 16s did all they could. It's not gonna bring my dad back. But you have to understand the lifeline that the city pays for. I grab your attention because I lost my father. All I'm asking is you make the right decision. It's not the easiest thing. I'm not here to ridicule you guys. It's not the easiest job. But to stand here in front of you, and just mourn the loss, today is two weeks my dad has passed. It's not the easiest thing. So, I'm begging you, and I know it's the hardest decision for you guys to make, please, all we have is Station 16s. Thank you.
Thank you very much, and we're very sorry for your loss, sir. Bob Brustoff is next, after that is Bonnie Clay.
Thank you. Good morning, I'm the president, City Council. I'm here to speak against the closing of Station 106 in West Hills. The information that was provided by the, in the report from the city administrative office in regards to the average number of trips that a, an ambulance makes, is apparently incorrect. There was further complication with this study, I guess, that was done, or survey. Councilman Smith sent an email last night to people in West Hills, among others, with different numbers than city administrative office had. When I first learned about this proposed cutback, I went to Station 106, I spoke to the captain who was there, and I also spoke to two of the firemen who manned the ambulance. The reports indicate that the average daily trips that Station 106 makes is anywhere between two and seven trips per day. They don't seem to know. Either way, when I spoke to the captain and to the men who manned the ambulance, they said that their average daily trips are closer to 12 to 15. Station 106 should not be on this list. It is the westernmost ambulance in the San Fernando Valley. It serves the area west of De Soto Avenue as a BLS ambulance. It is the only BLS west of De Soto. If this station is cut in services, that means the ALS ambulances are going to have to cover, and people who have much more serious problems are going to lose their service. There will be in jeopardy. Councilman Smith, I don't know where you got the two days' average daily trips information from, but even the city administrator said it was seven, which is double the average number of these 10 stations of three and a half. Either way, this station is vital to our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for taking the time to be here as well. Bonnie Clay is our next speaker. Did I get that right, is it Clay, or Clea?
Good morning. Yes, it is. I'm Bonnie Clay from West Hills, and I'm here to speak for not making cuts in Station 106. There was no community impact report included in the recommended reduction of services. Station 106 has to cover for Stations 104 and 105 when they are down due to furlough days. The station has a BLS ambulance. It is the only BLS ambulance west of De Soto. Station 106 has three convalescent homes and two assisted living homes that need frequent assistance. These homes often require eight to 12 calls per day. Lots of slip and falls, cuts due to the elderly population. The station is in a corner of the valley that has no other sections, no other stations west of it or north of it. Stations 104 and 105, both ALS, are about two and a half miles away of five minutes that can cover for Station 106 when the ambulance is not available. Please do not make cuts in Station 106. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Clay. I'd like to recognize the chair of our Public Safety Committee, Mr. Smith. He'll be followed by Mr. Weezer, Mr. Kretz, and Ms. Hahn. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President, and just for clarification to the gentleman spoke, the numbers I got are from the Fire Department, and the 2.2 for West Hills is right out of the Fire Department document that we've had for the last few days, so that was for your station. Just for clarification, ladies and gentlemen, to refresh your memory of how we came to this point, you instructed my committee, the Public Safety Committee, to begin a discussion with both Police and Fire Departments to find additional revenues that they could contribute to this year's budget problems and next year's budget problems. What was brought to you was, one, a Police Department proposal of about $25 million on the go-forward basis, an estimate of another $53 million the next year from the Police Department, and one of the proposals that is before you today was from the Fire Department in reducing the BLS ambulance into 12 hours instead of 24 hours in certain very low-call areas of the city. I will tell you this, that when we had that working group, the discussion that took place that day was, with what certainty are we talking about that these three average calls per day are in the timeframe that you're talking about? The 12 hours that you're saying we are going to not have call, not have an ambulance there? What percentage of those will fall into that versus what percentage will fall into the 12 hours where we would have them? The response at that time in the committee was, overwhelming majority. We didn't have clarification of that until these documents came out the other day. And as I look at these documents, to me, and I look at the three, and to those folks, you know, somebody said to me last night, how many in your district? The answer is, I have the most, three. I suffer more than any district of this city. But when it was explained to me, the overwhelming majority of the calls would be met. What I see now is a document that says only 60% of the calls fall within that timeframe, 30% calls fall outside the timeframe of the 12 hours, which to me is maybe a technical majority, but it's certainly not an overwhelming majority. And it's very problematic for me to say to the people of my district or any district of this city, that in most cases, we wouldn't, we would have an ambulance there, but in a very, very large number, 40% or more, we wouldn't have an ambulance there. I don't know how you moralize that as being sufficient. What we have before us, and Ms. Hahn has brought forward a motion, which I was very happy to second, is to refine this, send it back, let us look at this more, discuss it more, in the context of all the issues that are still before us. There has been discussion before the council about the staff assistance that is still flying around the building. We have not analyzed that totally. There's a 1995 report I have seen. We have to say, what are those numbers today? Where are we in relationship? Because in 1995, and I might remind you of this, and I brought it up last night, in 1995, half of our fire stations had ambulances. Today, all of them. We doubled in less, in a little more than a decade, we doubled the ambulance fleet of the city of Los Angeles. And so I think that's something we should be proud of, the question is, can we afford to cut that? And can we afford to cut it with the numbers that we see before us today, which in my mind are insufficient and certainly lacking the public policy answer we need, and that is, can we really afford to do this for the dollars and cents that would save? Are there better options within the Fire Department and the Police Department, ladies and gentlemen, that really would give us the savings we need across the board? I would just also add one thing I added last night, if I can go over for just a moment, to remind those that are here today that weren't there last night. And I know some of the ladies here last night heard this, but as we look at the budget problems of the city of LA, these were not the budget problems that were created by the city council. Contrary to the popular belief, some people who have blogs who love to slam the city council, we didn't create the global financial disaster. We are a victim of the global disaster and finance, as is every city in America. In Colorado Springs, they put their police helicopter on eBay a few weeks ago. They told the people of that city that they are not gonna mow the lawns in the parks, they're gonna close the parks and not mow them, and if people want to use the parks, please bring your own lawnmower. These are the kind of things going on. The mayor of San Francisco said he's gonna lay out 15,000 people. New York City is... New York City is closing six fire stations, not fire companies, but the entire station. Cleveland has laid off police officers. This is going on across the country, and of course Vallejo has filed bankruptcy. These are the problems that governments across the country are facing, and the world. The nation of Greece is bankrupt. Spain and Portugal are falling very close suit. The EU is having to bail out whole countries. This is not a situation unique to LA, and it was not created by this City Council. So, I wanted to get that very clear. But we are dealing with the effects of that global economic disaster. And that is, we have less money. It's not a spending problem anymore. That has been a problem we've been dealing with for a couple of years. It is a revenue problem. And when you don't have enough money, you have to do something. Our revenue streams are down $300 million over what projected last year, $500 million in the last 18 months. You don't fix a problem like that with simple solutions. And so, that is what this council is dealing with. Every proposal must be looked at with a reasonable eye, a public policy point of view, and what is the best for the people of LA. And if we determine here today that we want to do this or not do this, it has to be in context of everything else we have to do as a city. And that will be, if we do this today, that's one savings. If we don't do it today, it increases our budget problem on the other 35 city departments that are left. That means less youth programs. That means less library hours. That means less social services. Those are the public policy decisions we have to make here today. So, what you have today before you, and I'm sorry to editorialize, but not everybody's heard that story, that what you have today is a proposal by the Fire Department to help plug the budget deficit gap in the Fire Department. And that was what was asked of them, that is the proposal before you today. I think it bears further discussion. I think the numbers come out, raise great questions for a lot of us. And to Ms. Hahn's motion, I think it's a reasonable opinion that we have seen other saving come forward, that we've taken action the last few weeks, have brought up $20, $30 million. I forgot what the last total was. And that gives us a little time to digest these things and look at it in the context of other Fire Department savings that have been proposed. And with that, I would support Ms. Hahn's motion and open the discussion. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and that motion is going to be circulated shortly. Mr. Wizar, and then Mr. Kretz.
Thank you very much, and thank you for that, Mr. Smith. Colleagues, I asked that we continue this item last week for precisely those reasons. To get more information and to put it in context of the other proposals in this report that the Police and Fire Efficiency Working Group are working on, I think we do have to take them all in a comprehensive fashion to look at what the trade-offs. Yes, we don't have great choices before us, but at least we could try to do it with the best information before us and then move forward on whatever that choice may be. Last night, at the El Serrino Budget and Finance Committee meeting, I did ask our Fire Department, for those reduced hours where there will not be a BLS at any one of these 10 stations, have we done an analysis as to the increased response time? That analysis hasn't been done. We also asked at the last full council meeting on the issue that Ms. Hahn brought up on staff assistance, how much would that realize for us in savings? We don't have that information yet. I think for us to push this back, to have it go back to the committee that Mr. Smith has been working on, get back the full information we need, bring it back in a full report, and then we could discuss the pros and cons of each proposal. I think that's the right way to go. Mr. President, on a procedural ground, we did continue this item from last week to today. The other motion was also introduced last week, I believe, so as I understand, Mr. Smith right now made a motion to revive that, which is to send it back to your committee. Is that?
Ms. Hahn made the motion.
Send it back to committee, okay. And that's what's going to be before us today. Okay, I think that's the appropriate route to go. And Mr. Smith, I want to thank you again for your approach on this issue. You've outlined several options. They were briefed in the report, but we do need more information on each one of those. So, we do see the pros and cons of each approach that we have to make. We are going to have to make difficult decisions at the end of the day, but it's better to do it with full information before us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kretz.
Thank you, Mr. President. If we do this, there'll always be an ambulance when we need it, except when it's not there. Most of the time, it will be there, but in some relatively small number of cases, an ambulance will arrive more slowly, and in some relatively small number of cases, someone will die as a result. Now, the statistics, as I understand them, are if an ambulance and a paramedic arrives within the first minute of a heart attack, 90% of the people survive. If they arrive 12 minutes or later, virtually everyone will die in that circumstance. Now, in 1976, my father had a heart attack, and the relatively new paramedic program came out there pretty quickly, in nine or 10 minutes. It wasn't enough, and he died. Now, we all know now that our better program with many more ambulances, that we've improved over the years, in the same circumstance, they probably would have been out there sooner, and he very well might be alive. That's the kind of choice we're talking about here. Now, we're only talking about 10 ambulances. In some cases, though, it'll mean that the ambulance that would have been available will have to come from somewhere else a little bit later, and it'll cost lives. And I know we're looking at all kinds of choices in the budget. From my personal standpoint, there's nothing that can more directly affect whether someone lives or dies among all the services in our entire budget than ambulance and paramedic services. And I honestly think that is the absolute last place that we should be looking at cutting. It's only my opinion, but as I've said before, I think saving lives should be a higher priority than anything else in this budget, and there's nothing that we can draw as direct a connection to. So, I would ask that it be sent back. If it comes back here, no matter what the analysis, honestly, I'm going to vote against it, and I would encourage the rest of you to do the same.
Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. And, you know, this is a sobering time, certainly for all of us, and we are looking at every possible way that we can to solve the current budget crisis and next year's crisis. It's, it's not good news, but these are policy decisions, colleagues, that we're going to have to make. And while I appreciate that the working group and, and the Fire Department came back with a way to save $3 million, which was closing these ambulances, it's up to us to decide whether or not, and that's what my motion pretty much says, is go back to the drawing board, Fire Department, and one more time, come back with a way to save $3 million, because I don't think there is the will on this council to close these ambulances. And I, I don't want to base our budget on statistics and the odds on whether or not those ambulances are going to be needed at that particular point, and which life is it going to be, or that may be lost as a result of that policy. And, you know, there is, obviously, the history is, of course, my dad, the late, great Kenny Hahn, in 1970, or late 60s, you know, had, had his own doctor come to him and say, "I'll tell you how you can save a life a day." We know that in that first hour, particularly in a heart attack, that that's what's critical. And if we can find a way to have firefighters actually be the first on the scene, administer life-saving techniques, including administering drugs, we know we can save lives. And that's what these are all about. The, the rescue ambulances, the, the other ones don't have that ability. If there's not a paramedic on a scene, they do not have the ability to provide some of those life-saving techniques. So, this is critical to our philosophy on, on how we believe Los Angeles should behave. So, my motion says, we know we've got to save money. We're asking you to save $3 million. Find another way, and whether or not it's your staff assistance, whether or not it's maybe consolidating, consolidating some battalions, let's look at other ways to save this money, because I think there's a lot of us on the council that will not, as Paul said, no matter what the analysis comes back, are going to vote to end ambulances in the City of Los Angeles, these basic life support. That's critical to how we behave as a city, and we want you to try one more time to save money without risking people's lives.
Thank you, colleagues. We have, I think it's clear where we're going to head on this, and we do have six more speakers on the queue, though. Mr. Alacon, Mr. Rosenthal, Mr. Labons, Mr. Kukroy, and Mr. Parks, and Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Alacon.
Councilmembers, I agree with the direction we're going in, and would concur that before we make what I would consider piecemeal cuts, we need to have the whole picture. And that's exactly why I introduced the motion almost two weeks ago, to have a full discussion in the council with the general managers about these subjects. I understand Public Works was coming tomorrow, and, and that's exactly what will happen. We don't know the total ramifications of our decisions, and yet, and yet we are trying to proceed with, with the piecemeal. In this particular case, we're talking about a core function, saving lives. And I know none of us want to do that. I have to tell you, having worked personally on riots, and floods, and fires, and even being at the MetroLink accident, it's, it's, it's the hardest thing to do, to, to cut frontline services. I want to reiterate that my district lost this service last year, and the backup were two of the, the proposed cuts this year. So, I don't know who's going to back up my district, and, and there's no analysis as to the ramifications to the 7th Council District. I'd like to have that before having to make this decision. I also have said publicly that I have no problem with the staff assistance, but in the context of ambulances to staff assistance, I got to tell you, I fall on the side of the ambulances. We have to take a close look. Now, I believe staff assistance provide an important function. Is it more, more important than an ambulance? That's a hard decision for me to make. I think that our priority ought to be the other way around. But more than that, I think we need to look at the entire Fire Department budget and know what we're getting. And to, and this is not the first year we've done this. For several years, it seems that the Fire Department gets tasked with one little function that's going to be eliminated, and, and we really have a tough time trying to figure out the service impacts. But I think we need to do that this year more than ever, and, but before we cut public safety officials, particularly those that are on the line, I, I hope each of you remember the blackened faces or the, the stress on the faces of the, the public safety people that you've worked with during the crises that you've experienced, and, and then understand that what we're doing is, is creating more stress on, on those that are left to provide that service. I don't think we need to do that. I think we need to, we can refine this pencil and, and find the equivalent savings elsewhere with less impact for the benefit of the community.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal, and then Mr. Labons, Kukroy, and Parks, and Cardenas.
Thank you, Mr. President. This was a serendipitous moment a second ago, when one of my incredible staffers collapsed in paramedics, and I want to thank the Fire Department here in the room that were truly the first responders, and the others that showed up and moved Paul, where he's off to Kaiser Permanente right now as we are sitting here. It's obviously clear last night how the community felt on the east side of town in El Serrino. It was very compelling, especially the gentleman who lost his father on the 23rd of February. Words cannot express our sympathy for such a terrible loss. And obviously, paramedics and the entire support system of early responders is the most critical part, coupling that with police in terms of public safety. That's why we're here. That's where our tax dollars should be going. So, I'm most grateful for Ms. Hahn's quick leadership on that, Mr. Smith's clarification, the man who understands the budget better than most of us, that we send it back to rework it and come up with a position that in no way jeopardizes anybody's life for a first response. And I look forward to the report back that gives us that comfort level. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Labons.
I'd like to ask the fire officials to come to the center table just to add just a little to it, if you could, please. And Ms. Hahn, thank you for your father, who, you told me the story how he went up to Sacramento and met with then-Governor Reagan, whose father had died, Mr. Reagan's father had died because of the, and your father convinced him that this is the right way to go. Explain for the public here, we have 105 fire stations throughout the city. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And how many of them have what we call a physical ambulance in their facility?
All have.
And how many of them have a paramedic ambulance in their facility? That's a supreme, if I could say that, a schooled, a skilled firefighter who has a classification to be a paramedic.
There are 89 stations that have paramedic capability.
Eighty-nine. So, that would be another 24 that are what we call the non-paramedic ambulances.
Actually, we have 38 non- paramedic.
Excuse me?
We have 38 basic life support.
Thirty-eight. And what is Fire Station 16s?
16s is a basic life support ambulance.
Basic life, okay. One thing I have to think we should always do as we look at the city, if we could look at it from the edges in, I know we like to put our resources in the center, but everybody counts, you know, in a way. It's easier to come sometimes from the outside in as opposed to get from the inside out. I know, in my case here, there's a station on the Coinga Pass that does have resources above it to the south and to the north, so I feel somewhat comfortable if there's a, if there's a suggested cut on this issue here. But on those 33, is that correct, did you say, that are?
There's, we have 38 basic life support.
Thirty-eight. What would happen if we took the 38 and the 89 and tried to get everyone at least to have something? Some have two or three, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Some have more than one.
So, is this something in your committee, Mr. Smith, you could discuss to see if, at least if we have a value? Because you mentioned a very good point, that in 1996, many stations did not have it at all. And then, now that we've expanded the service, is there something you can consistently put across? Because each, if you're a BLS, which is a basic life support, you do have a paramedic on the four-member engine company, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Now, if you have a paramedic ambulance in your station and an engine company, is there a paramedic still on that engine company?
Yes, sir. For instance, 16s, the paramedic resource is on Engine 16.
Right. But let's say it 56s, which has a paramedic, is there always a paramedic on that engine? So, if the paramedic ambulance is in Griffith Park at a call, the engine is on the Golden State Fair, is there a paramedic always on that engine, or is that catch-as-catch-can?
Well, we, we make sure that we have a paramedic in each station, whether it is on the engine or if it's a paramedic ambulance.
Right. I understand that. I understand that. But it doesn't mean, I understand, thank you very much. I think this is going to be an important aspect as we look forward. You don't want to close this. The chief was here the other day. He doesn't want to close anything. The librarian doesn't want to close anything. Nothing wants to be closed. We understand that. How we can get through this with trying to keep the service, the service that the people need is so key to that. So, I look forward to that. Mr. Smith, and if you'll let all of us know, because we'd like to participate in that. Thank you very much, Chief.
Mr. Kukroy.
Thank you, Mr. President. First, let me thank Mr. Smith for putting this whole discussion into the context that you put it into. It's certainly true that the budget challenges we face are grave, as they are throughout the country and throughout the world right now. And we routinely hear in each session, as constituents approach us and ask us to try to resolve this situation without cutting services. Well, it's not possible. There will be significant reductions in many of the areas of service that this city offers. That is inevitable, and I think we have to be forthright about saying so. But I also think that as policymakers, it's our challenge to focus the reduction in services to the extent we can by focusing on what are the core missions of this city, and what are the core functions that this city serves, and making sure that we maintain those services first. And I can't think of a more basic, core service than keeping people alive by our first responders. And, you know, Mr. Kretz mentioned the, the story about the loss of his dad, and how that might have been avoided had a paramedic been available to respond more quickly. I was fortunate, because my dad survived a heart attack because a paramedic was quickly available. And another minute, another two minutes, I could have lost my dad. So, I think for all the people who came and talked about the importance of response time couldn't be more true. And, so I'm pleased that we're going in the direction, thank you, Ms. Hahn, for bringing this motion and for having us take this back to the table. But as we take it back to the table, you know, I think it's also true that we will probably need to find more cost efficiencies in fire service and police probably need to find more cost efficiencies in fire service and police service and every other service that the city provides. And I, again, applaud Mr. Smith and his working group for trying to be creative in doing so. I would ask that as we go back and look at this further, though, if we're going to look at efficiencies in ambulance service, low call volume alone can't be the deciding factor in determining how to redeploy these resources. Among other things, we need to look at impacts on response time. We need to look at distance to provide backup. We need to look at isolation of the stations that have that low call volume, what the traffic patterns are, demographics of the area, and what the severity of calls are. Those sorts of things have to be taken into account, in my view, as well. In my own district, for example, I have one of these stations, but it is in a very isolated area, and they don't have a ready backup that would be immediately available if an ambulance is not there to respond to a call. So I hope that those sorts of factors will be taken into account, not just call volume alone, but also direct impact on response time as we come back. So thank you, gentlemen, very much.
Thank you. Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. Can I have the CIO come up, please? I'd just like to quickly ask, in looking at the evaluation, and there was talking about different ambulances and such, the issue was trying to decipher about $3 million that came out of that recommendation, right? Is that what, how we got to that, or how did we end up with that particular issue of identifying the ambulances?
The three-month savings for moving the 60 firefighters out to the field to backfill, to backfill the constant staffing would save $3 million for the rest of the fiscal year.
Okay, so the firefighters aren't taken off the TO, they just move to another assignment?
Correct.
Okay. If there's a move afoot to unravel that, have you considered where $3 million would come elsewhere in the department?
We spoke with the fire department, and we met with them, and we discussed some of the different options, and this is what they came forward to us with, and said this was what would create the least amount of impact in the community.
Okay. Was a part of that discussion the issue of the staff assistance? Did that come in, and how did that play, or what's the comparison in cost savings?
The 57 staff assistants was the CIO's proposal to the fire department to cut. They came back and said, "We have an alternative plan that we feel would create, would create less impact on the city," and that would be the 10 BLS ambulances, which is the 60 firefighters.
What was the value of the 57 staff assistants?
The difference of the 57 staff assistance for the three months is $800,000 more savings for the 57 staff assistance.
Now, would that be this year's savings, or is it next year's savings?
That would be this year's. That would be for the final three months. It is $800,000 more in savings, because we would not need to backfill that BLS ambulance cut with the V-hours during the 12, you know, peak hours of, of, excuse me, of the day.
Okay. So the staff assistants would just be redeployed, or would they disappear?
Correct. No, the staff assistants would be the same type of plan. They would be moved into the field to backfill.
And so that would save us overtime on constant staffing?
Correct.
But yet with them, you would still maintain the ambulance positions that was the department's proposal. Those positions would be maintained, but the staff assistants would move in other areas and cut down the overtime?
Correct.
Okay. Now, as far as looking, and you're the analyst for the fire department, and we're looking for this $3 million cut, are there other recommendations that can be put side by side to evaluate where $3 million might be forthcoming if paramedic services are viewed as the last resort?
These are the two primary ones that we have spent time on. You know, this talk about the 10th member, taking some of those, this talk of some of the special duty members that could be moved to the field to achieve this. There are several different options that are out there that can be considered.
But you're saying that the recommendation of the CIO was approximately $800,000 more than this alternative?
Yes.
Okay. And then, in both cases, both of these alternatives can be done administratively, it's just a matter of deployment and can be done almost immediately?
It's moving the people, right. There isn't any of the firefighters that would lose their job. They would be moved out to the field to fill the vacancies that they need to fill each day.
Okay. Let me take one question, Mr. Smith. And again, I ask those questions, hopefully to aid you as you're going through your task force. But how quickly are you going to come back to us with some recommendation so we can achieve the maximum of that $3 million for this year?
Yeah. First of all, I'm not so sure we're going to see that in this year. I think what we're really looking for, and Ms. Hahn's motion really directed us to look forward to, is for the '10, '11 budget. So my question is, when do you begin, when do you think we'll begin the budget hearings so we could have that ready for us at that time?
Well, I think the issue is, if we're on schedule, it's mid-April. But the issue is, I would hope that we would be looking at some budgetary items well before April to start the council at least deliberating, because I don't think we could wait this year on the formal budget. I think we're going to have to start looking well in advance. But I think one of the goals or missions that we were trying to is say, how much can we recover this year in order to at least address some of the shortfall, and then we get the full year next year?
We will see if we can get a meeting next week and see if Mr. Zine could share that meeting, because I won't be here that day. If Mr. Zine can share the meeting, we'll have one next week to begin the meetings over again, because we took a week off here, so.
Thank you very much. And so I'd ask the CIO if you can look at, in the realm of dollars and services, that you'd be able to prepare for the task force to bring to them ideas as it relates to the maximum that we can recover this year, which get the full dollar figure for next year, but that you assess that so when Mr. Smith's committee or task force meets, that you be able to give him the best judgment operationally and financially.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas.
Point of clarification, Mr. Attorney or the clerk's office, if we were to end debate right now, we would go straight to the motion of Ms. Hahn, if it were to prevail?
Yes, that would be.
Okay. And we'll be, we end debate.
All right. We just have Mr. Labons on the queue as the last one. Is there an objection?
When you come back, just a question, Tony. When you come back, we have some IT up on the screen there of, to show the locations, et cetera, figure out a little PowerPoint that would help everybody see it. I think that'd be helpful. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cardenas.
If. Go ahead, then. We have amendment before us. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay. As amended, then let's go ahead and prepare the roll.
Mr. President, I just want to, point of information. So was the motion to send back and to discuss, or send back, "We don't like this option, find something else"?
I think it's before each one of us. If you want to see it, it should be right there on your desk.
The Hahn motion was a very broad motion to discuss all the options. All right. Okay.
Okay. Please prepare the rolls amended and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Okay. And that is approved. Next order of business.
Counsel has motions for posting a referral.
As opposed and referred.
There are excuses on the desk.
Let's run through those.
Councilmember Perry requests to be excused March 31st to leave at 12:15 for city business. That meets council policy.
She's excused.
Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused Tuesday, April 6th for city business. That meets council policy.
He is excused.
Councilmember Kukoryan requests to be excused Wednesday, March 24th for personal business. That meets council policy.
Okay. That excuse is granted.
And Councilmember Zine requests to be excused Tuesday, March 23rd for city business. That meets council policy.
He is excused as well.
That clears the desk.
Any announcements, colleagues? Mr. Parks?
I advise the public and my colleagues that our last Budget on the Road meeting will be March the 22nd at 6:00 p.m., and the location will be changed to the Expo Center in Expo Park on Menlo. And so just want to make sure that we put out previous information at another location, but we want to move that to Expo on the 22nd at 6:00 p.m.
Great. Thank you very much. No other announcements? Do we have any adjourning motions today? Any adjourning motions, colleagues? Last call for any adjourning motions. If there are none, Mr. Clerk, if you please call the roll.